Hello, this is Joe Pearson, the project planner for this application. This is a request to request for amendments to the River Park Specific Plan and Development Agreement filed by the applicant Ann Walsh of Shea Properties. The action of the Planning Commission on these items is a recommendation to the Oxnard City Council. The project consists of a request for a specific plan amendment to make text and map amendments to the River Park Specific Plan. These amendments would introduce a new high-density land use designation within planning districts B, C, and D, which would allow for residential development of thirty to eighty units to the acre, as identified in Figure 2B of the specific plan. It would also create a new apartment development type. It would revise planning area boundaries for consistency. It would update the land use table and update exhibits throughout the plan for consistency with the proposed changes. The new land use designation under the specific plan would be applied in combination with the existing commercial regional land use, so both residential or commercial would be allowed on each of these properties. This amendment would allow for development of up to an additional one thousand twenty-five residential units under the River Park Specific Plan. This would be allowed in exchange for a reduction of up to approximately five hundred and sixty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-seven square feet of non-residential development potential in accordance with specified development scenarios as identified in this table, which identifies various development alternatives, which would be either-or choices. Also, the application includes a proposed Development Agreement Amendment to allow for a time extension, impact fee modifications, and to define future affordability requirements for the new proposed housing. The River Park Development Agreement does not cover the properties or development within the proposed District B. No physical development is proposed with this request. Any future development proposals would be required to comply with the 2030 General Plan, the River Park Specific Plan, and applicable development standards. Pursuant to Oxnard City Code, the Planning Commission is an advisory body which provides land use recommendations to the city council on items such as general plan amendments, specific plan amendments, ordinance amendments, and development agreements. And as previously identified, this would include a specific plan amendment and development agreement amendment. The seven-hundred-and-two-acre River Park Specific Plan site is located in the western portion of Ventura County, in the northwestern edge of the city of Oxnard, and is bounded by the Ventura Freeway to the south, Vineyard Avenue to the east, Central Road to the north, and the Santa Clara River to the west. The River Park Specific Plan area is currently under active development and operation. The project area is surrounded by development, including residential, commercial, light industrial, with only the west side being undeveloped with the Santa Clara River. The River Park Specific Plan contains multiple general plan designations, including commercial, residential, and public and resource protection. The sites that we will be focused on in this presentation are within the regional commercial land use designation. The zoning designation is River Park Specific Plan. However, there are multiple land uses within the overall specific plan as identified in the zoning designation map shown here. The River Park Specific Plan was adopted by the city council on September tenth, two thousand and two. Together with the general plan amendment, a zone change and annexation, a development agreement, and EIR certification related to the River Park Specific Plan approval. The original River Park Specific Plan allowed for the phased development of two thousand eight hundred and five dwelling units and two million four hundred and eighty-five thousand square feet of commercial development. The original River Park Specific Plan was developed following the design principles of the new urbanism and smart growth movement, which emphasized the importance of mixed land uses in close proximity, community scale for pedestrian walkability, and limiting the need for automobile usage, as well as promoting higher-density development and a focus on the importance of the overall physical design. Over the years, since the approval of the River Park Specific Plan, six amendments to the River Park Specific Plan have been approved. The first was to include regulations for temporary uses. The second was a minor land use change for a small parcel from open space to commercial. The third was to allow a freeway-oriented pylon sign, subject to approval of a design development review permit. The fourth allowed three freeway-oriented monument signs. The fifth amendment increased the maximum number of dwelling units from two thousand eight hundred and five to three thousand forty-three units, and reduced the maximum amount of commercial development from the original two million four hundred and eighty-five thousand to two million ninety-eight thousand square feet. The additional units were to be located in District D of the River Park Specific Plan. And the last amendment was a text amendment to allow two monument signs in Planning District C. On September tenth, two thousand and two, city council adopted an ordinance approving the existing development agreement. The River Park Development Agreement has been amended on five previous occasions. The purpose of these amendments included expanding the properties covered by the DA, altering fees, and other items which are further identified in the staff report. There are a variety of changes being proposed, but the key changes include allowing for an increase in the maximum number of residential units allowed under the River Park Specific Plan and the potential reduction of commercial square footage that would occur under various development options, which has been identified in the table shown. In addition, there would be a new section added outlining the application of the development options for residential or commercial development in River Park Specific Plan districts B, C, and D. This map shows the proposed residential properties within districts B, C, and D in purple. With the exception of the property located in District D, which currently contained a parking lot, the other properties which are proposed to have the additional residential are currently vacant. As shown, these properties are located in the commercial areas of the River Park Specific Plan and are adjacent to commercial development or other higher-density residential uses. In addition to incorporating various changes to accommodate the items above, the request includes an adjustment in the distribution of commercial building square footage among River Park districts, including the reduction of the maximum amount of commercial in districts F, G, I, and J, and a corresponding increase in the commercial square footage of District D. However, as identified in the table, these numbers may be modified. The proposal will add a seventh residential product type called Apartments Urban, which would be allowed on the properties identified in each of the districts. The specific plan amendment will provide development standards for the new housing type, including building coverage, building height, open space requirements, parking requirements, setbacks, and access requirements. This table will provide the maximum number of units per bedroom unit type for the additional residential development. This will ensure the final unit mix and population numbers are consistent with the analysis provided in the Addendum fifteen to the River Park Specific Plan Final EIR. And so this would limit the maximum number of studios, one-bedroom units, two-bedroom units, or three-bedroom units that would be allowed under the additional one thousand and twenty-five units. The River Park Specific Plan Amendment would require a parking management plan for the future apartment urban developments. The parking management plan would be implemented to allow for the effective management of off-street and on-street resident and visitor parking associated with the proposed higher-density developments. The Parking Amendment Plan shall describe parking counts onsite and curbside parking management and enforcement practices that will be required for all apartment urban projects. This requirement is similar to the requirement for a parking management plan in other districts within River Park. The purpose of the plan is to identify a series of specific strategies and parking controls to prevent residents and visitors of this development from creating parking issues that affect surrounding land uses and traffic safety. Some important potential components of these plans include limiting the number of cars allowed per unit within residential leases, assigning parking spaces to residents, and parking enforcement onsite. The Parking Management Plan may include requirements that they be revised if the plan is shown to be ineffective. The Parking Management Plan may allow shared parking arrangements with adjacent uses or districts. Also, the Parking Amendment Plan shall be approved by the city traffic engineer. Lastly, as part of the research conducted for the environmental document using recent census data, it was shown that the type of development proposed under this Apartments Urban development type would generate approximately one point one eight people per bedroom on average. This generally aligns with the parking requirements. So in combination with the Parking Management Plan, parking at these locations are not anticipated or parking issues at these locations are not anticipated. However, parking would also be looked at on a project-by-project basis as individual developments came in. The last key change is primarily a cleanup item to reconfigure the boundaries of River Park Specific Plan District B to be consistent with the development that has taken place or been entitled within the River Park Specific Plan Districts B and C. A series of changes are proposed as part of the requested DA amendment. Generally, these include an extension of the DA for a period of five years to set the applicable impact fee rates at the rates effective in September twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, for the remainder of the agreement, to recognize existing waivers of storm drain fees from the original DA, to recognize an existing credit to Quimby fees, and provide a waiver for future Quimby and park-related fees due to the amount of park space constructed under the build-out of the River Park Specific Plan, which far exceeds city requirements. Also, to recognize an existing waiver of sewer fees for commercial development and provide a credit towards the proposed residential. The amendment would also recognize the existing credit towards growth fees and set all future growth fees at the rates effective September twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, for the term of the agreement. Continuing through some of the changes or requested changes, the Development Agreement Amendment would also set traffic fees at the rates effective September twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, for the term of the agreement. It would adjust the mobility fee based on the proposed development populations, which I previously touched on, which was calculated using the recent census data, and provide a credit towards the new mobility fee based on credit for the construction of the existing bicycle pedestrian facilities constructed as part of the build-out of the River Park Specific Plan. Also, the Development Agreement Amendment would recognize the existing public art provided within the collection and provide a credit towards the public art fee for maintaining that art onsite. And then lastly, the amendment would set the fifteen percent affordability housing requirements for all additional units constructed under the specific plan. Looking at general plan consistency, the River Park Specific Plan is located within the North Oxnard Transenhancement District, Urban Village, as defined in the 2030 General Plan. Urban villages are mixed-use areas designed to encourage persons who live near their place of employment and/or support services and integrate complementary land uses to promote pedestrian orientation, to reduce trips and vehicle miles traveled, and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. The North Oxnard Transenhancement District, or noted area, includes the area north of the Oxnard Boulevard Vineyard Avenue intersection, generally between Ventura Road and Vineyard Avenue, including the Espinosa Shopping Center, the Village Specific Plan, and the River Park Specific Plan. This area was designated as a catalyst project by the California Department of Housing and Community Development as an example of desirable mixing of land uses and activities combined with transit that will in total reduce the volume of local vehicular travel, and as a result, greenhouse gas emissions. The districts in the River Park Specific Plan area that would be modified with the proposed Specific Plan Amendment are designated CR or Regional Commercial in the 2030 General Plan Land Use Map. This designation allows for major multi-tenant shopping centers that may include offices, hotels, and other services, as well as residential, live-work, work-live, and mixed uses, which are strongly encouraged in these areas. Some of the characteristics of urban villages, which this project will further, is to promote infill development, to continue reinvesting in the existing community, to provide for a mixture of land uses, as well as a mix of residential densities and housing types, to provide a minimum of fifteen percent affordable housing, which will be provided in each of the developments as an inclusionary requirement. And these areas will be located along or near corridors and transit nodes. And also will provide for high priority towards transit, pedestrian, and bicycle circulation, given the existing pedestrian and bicycle network within the River Park Specific Plan area. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, on July sixteenth, two thousand and two, the city council certified the Final EIR for the River Park Specific Plan and adopted a statement of overriding considerations. The Final EIR found four areas of significant impacts, which included earth resources, mineral resources, water quality, agricultural resources, and cultural resources, historic resources. There have been fourteen prior addendums to the River Park EIR, which have been summarized in Addendum fifteen, provided as part of this project. Pursuant to the Super guidelines, an addendum to an EIR is the appropriate environmental document in instances where only minor technical changes or additions are necessary or none of the conditions described calling for the preparation of a subsequent EIR or negative declaration have occurred. A subsequent document or EIR would be required if the project resulted in new significant environmental effects or a substantial increase in the severity of a previously identified significant effect. Substantial changes occur with respect to the circumstances under which a project is undertaken, which results in new environmental effects or a substantial increase in severity of a previously identified significant effect. Or lastly, if new information of substantial importance, which was not known or could not have been known with the exercise of reasonable diligence at the time, the previous EIR was certified as complete. An environmental consultant under the supervision of Planning Division staff has prepared Addendum fifteen to the approved Final EIR to evaluate potential environmental impacts of the proposed project. Addendum fifteen to the Final EIR was prepared pursuant to the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act. The addendum evaluated each of the development options. The addendum for the project analyzed the changes between the original project and the proposed project for each of the options. There are two areas that I wanted to touch on with regards to the environmental review. The first is with regard to aesthetics. The proposed Specific Plan Amendment would introduce additional multifamily residential development in the central and southwest portions of the community, up to six stories with a height up to ninety feet in three specific locations. The River Park Specific Plan currently allows buildings up to two stories or seventy-five feet in District B and five stories in districts A, C, and E. Allowing buildings with up to six stories in District B would be a change from the currently permitted height. However, this district is located in the southwest corner of the District Plan area next to existing commercial and residential development. The locations in districts C and D where this type of apartment building would be permitted are also located are also in locations surrounded by other multi-story residential and retail commercial development. The location and scale of this type of residential building that would be permitted would be consistent with the overall pattern of development in these mixed-use commercial districts and the goals and objectives of the River Park Specific Plan. And as part of the addendum, a massing study was prepared to show how the proposed buildings would fit into the existing built environment. The second item that I wanted to touch on was traffic. The roadway network for the River Park Specific Plan area was built out under the River Park Specific Plan. The proposed Specific Plan Amendment will not alter the existing roadway system. Each of the properties identified for the additional residential currently allows commercial office and has access to the existing roadway system. A traffic study was prepared for the requested Specific Plan Amendment and independently reviewed by the city's traffic engineer. As identified in Addendum fifteen, the traffic study concludes that the build-out with the additional residential instead of the commercial would generate nine thousand three hundred and nine less average daily trips, or approximately a eleven percent reduction, and seven hundred and sixty-two fewer PM peak hour trips for an approximately nine-point-eight reduction, percent reduction, and would only slightly increase the P, the peak AM trips by two hundred and twenty-two for a four-point-seven percent increase compared to the original River Park Specific Plan. The existing roadway network has been found to be sufficient to serve the additional residential units. Additionally, the additional residential units would be required to pay traffic impact fees. For all issuers, the addendum concludes that the project would not result in new or substantially more severe impacts than those identified in the prior EIR with the incorporation of the previously identified mitigations. Lastly, the original mitigations will remain applicable. These mitigations will be applicable to any future development projects under the specific plan. A community workshop on the Specific Plan Amendment was held on August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. Public notice signs were posted in three locations corresponding with the proposed land use changes. Notifications were mailed to the River Park neighborhood. Approximately two thousand notices were mailed. The meeting was held online due to COVID-nineteen meeting restrictions. Sixteen members of the community attended this meeting with three people speaking on the item. The video from the online workshop was also posted on the city's website for members of the public to view separately. The primary concern identified at the community workshop was walkability and connectivity of the potential housing in District B to other resources. While District B is on the periphery, there would be a variety of commercial uses within close proximity. Also, new urbanist principles generally define walking distances as a quarter-to-half mile, which is a five-to-ten-minute walk. In addition to the commercial development proposed at the landing directly adjacent to District B, many of the stories within the collection are also within that half-mile. Other than those concerns, the comments were generally supportive of the project and the introduction of housing and the recognition of the need for more housing within the city. Consistent with public noticing requirements, the Planning Commission hearing was advertised onsite or with onsite postings in the three locations. Or with onsite postings in the three locations. And by a mail notice to property owners within River Park and within three hundred feet of River Park. To date, staff has received one public comment and opposition, but no other inquiries regarding the proposed project. Based on the information provided in the presentation and associated staff report. Staff recommend that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending city council. Approve the amendment to the River Park specific plan subject to. Certain findings and certification of an addendum to the final E I R. And adopt a resolution. Recommending city council's approval of a sixth amendment to the development agreement for the River Park specific plan. Again, subject to certain findings and the certification of the addendum to the final E I R.